Three sheriffs. We got three.
You requested a two-inch meter.
Didn't give you permission to record me?
Didn't need it.
And the one cop was like, like, what are we doing here? And he was like, we're here for the guy in the gray hoodie.
You're not gonna believe this. The mayor of Otter Creek called not one, not two, but three Levy County sheriffs to remove me from the town hall meeting. You gotta watch this all the way from the beginning, all the way from the end, to understand the full story of how I believe the town is actually stealing from me. Now, I know there's lots of behind the doors and off-record dealings going on that I believe are corrupt. But this just is gonna blow your mind on how I got three sheriff called on me at a town hall meeting in one of the oddest places in the world, Otter Creek. Now, this goes all the way back to 2021, April 2021. This is my first interaction about my water bill. Otter Creek keeps getting hotter. Just got a water bill. Now, here in Otter Creek, whether you're residential or whether you're commercial, the water is $22.50 a month, and that's up to 4,000 gallons. After 4,000 gallons, then you have surcharges on top of that. Now, they've sent me a bill charging me $50 a month. Something's a little odd, or a little odd-er about that. I've already done some research. I already know that everybody, whether they are a business or in a residential home, gets $22.50 a month. That's just the rate. So somehow, they came up with this rate of $50. Now, I already guessed they're gonna go, well, we had to put in a two-inch water meter line for you. Yep, and you did. And I paid $2,360 for that line. And I'm not paying twice for it. We're headed to the town. Remember, town is a public place. All the servants in there are public servants. We're gonna go see what they have to say about it.
That was the initial bill. That was the first bill.
For, for how?
It, the billing, billing is from the first to the end of the month.
Okay, so this is-
But for whatever, you know, any part of that month.
Okay.
When, from your turn-on to the bill.
So is, is the difference in the turn-on of the amount charged different than?
There was an, there was a, we're still working on the, the, um, commercial rate.
Okay.
So the first one was a little higher than, than the second one, and from now on.
Meet Mary, the town hall clerk. She works every day, almost every day, from 10:00 to 2:00 in the townhouse of Otter Creek. This is the first incident when I come peacefully about the town stealing from me. And as you'll see, Mary's just pulling numbers out of nowhere. It does not get peaceful after this first encounter. So your commercial rate, who, who applies for a commercial rate?
Well, you have the two-inch meter.
Uh-huh.
And that makes a difference.
So am I the only one in town with a two-inch meter?
There's one other.
Who's the other?
Oh. Well. They, they currently do not, are not using their two-inch meter.
Okay.
But there isn't, but there, and we are working on the rate structure.
Okay, so from my understanding, from my understanding, you, let me know if I'm wrong. I was quoted that the water is $22.50 a month.
For residential.
And I am a residential property. Now, regardless of whether I have a two-inch meter or not, I paid for the two-inch meter. I paid $2,360 for a two-inch meter. I'm not gonna pay twice for a two-inch meter. I am a residential property. I am not a commercial property. Now, I see here that you put "commercial", but I am a residential property. I am zoned as a residential property. I've already paid for the meter. The meter should make no difference. It is $22.50 regardless of whether you're residential or whether you're commercial in this town, up to 4,000 gallons. Now, here, it tells me, your bill tells me what I used as far as gallons.
Right.
So what happened here?
Because when we put in, you requested a commercial meter.
Which I have.
And so you are billed commercially.
Which I paid for.
Your bill is commercial. It's not the $22.50 for 4,000 gallons.
Wouldn't that been important to tell me when-
Who did you ask?
I asked you.
No, you didn't.
So I was told the water would be $22.50 a month.
That's for residential. That's for the, the-
And I am a residential property.
Standard residential meter.
So what is the difference? So that I understand, what's the difference between a residential meter and the commercial meter that you're charging for here? Because in my understanding, 4,000 gallons in Otter Creek, you're charged $22.50 for 4,000 gallons. It doesn't, there's nowhere that says anything about the size of the meter whatsoever. I didn't use 4,000 gallons. I used... I used 1,300 gallons. That's way less than 4,000 gallons. Your billing is based on gallons, not based on size of the meter. And I'm being billed what other people aren't being billed. So, for example, Otter Creek Post Office is a commercial property. You're not charging them at a commercial rate. You're charging them $22.50. I have other commercial or business-owned properties around me. For example, the hunting club, that's not being charged at a commercial rate. It's being charged at $22.50. So why am I, as a resident of Otter Creek, being charged $50 for something that, just out of the blue, you guys pulled and went, okay, I'm gonna charge him $50?
Well, well, take it up with the council.
So who made that decision? The council didn't, because I've already talked to council members, some of them. So the council doesn't know anything about this, some of those members. Who told you to bill me at $50 a month?
That was the commercial rate.
Did anybody tell you to bill me that? Or did you just go $50 a month?
No, I went by the, the previous commercial rates.
So previous people in Otter Creek have been charged $50 a month? Or am I the first person ever to be charged?
It's actually gonna be $66.25 per month.
So am I the first person ever to be charged at their commercial rate?
No, there, there were previous, um, two-inch meters that are not in service at this time.
So they're just not in service anymore? But they were charged at what rate?
The, um, si- It was, um, actually more than it is going to be now. But I'll take it up with the council and, and I'll see what kind of an adjustment.
Some members of the council already, they're unaware of this. As a matter of fact, the members of the council that I talked to said, it does not matter whether you're commercial or residential. The rate is the rate is the rate. It's 4,000 gallons. After that, then you're charged after that. Why are they doing this? And so the council, most of your members of your council have no idea about this.
Well, and, um, we're going to be doing rate adjustments very soon. And then we'll have a-
So I'm in, I'm in a situation here. I've got a bill. You did mail it to me properly. And, and you're charging me, you're charging me overdue. And I understand that. It wasn't my mess. It wasn't your mess. It was the post office.
Yeah, and it came back, it came back really late.
I talked to the post office this morning, and they apologized. And they said they're gonna correct it. They're gonna watch all of my mail. So, so the post office has apologized. I understand it. It's not your fault. It's not my fault. What I need to understand, and I don't, because I've already talked to other commercial buildings and properties here in Otter Creek, and I've talked to some of your, your council members. I don't understand why I'm being overcharged for something that they're not aware of.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll adjust it to the residential rate. And then when, when the rate changes come in, um, so you'll, you'll owe, um, $45 when you should, you may have already gotten your, your next bill.
Okay. Well, hopefully, the post office didn't screw it up. So can I pay you $45 for this bill?
Yep. And I will make the adjustment.
And we'll be good?
Yep.
We'll be completely good?
We'll be good.
And so-
Well, if you pay me $45 for this bill, I'm gonna make the adjustment, so you'll be paying $22.50 for this bill.
Yes.
And $22.50 for the ones that just went out.
Okay. I'm not fine with all of a sudden Jeremy Hales moved into town. Let's bill him something that, out of the air and out of the blue.
And, and I apologize, because I was basing, basing it on the previous commercial.
Did somebody tell you to do it? Or did you just go, okay, well, I think this is it?
Because it was designated as a commercial property.
Nobody told you to do it?
Nobody's, no.
So it's not a commercial property. It's not. It is a residential property. If it goes to a commercial property, which it may in the future, I will make sure that you know that it's gonna be designated as a commercial property. Please, please understand. I am not trying to be difficult. I am a person that does not like confrontation in the first place. But if I get pushed, I'm going to shove back if something's not right. And so I'm not trying to be confrontational. I just want it done right. That's it. That's it.
And you should be treated just like everyone else is.
Can I write you a check?
Sure can.
May I borrow a pen?
You may.
Remember those words. "I should be treated like everybody else is." I'm not sure everybody else had three sheriffs called on them at the town hall meeting when you were called out on your corruption. Mary, in?
Yes, she's on the phone at the moment.
Okay.
Yeah, we can get together and, um, look on it if you need a new copy of whatever you want. Are you coming?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you wanna be done?
You don't have a choice. You're in a public building. You're a public official. You don't have a choice. You don't like it?
I'm not a public official.
Welcome to present day, March 2023, where I have been charged a commercial rate again for well, well over a year. And I've complained about it through mail. I'm getting late fees, and the town is actually threatening to shut off all of my water. Oh, by the way, you might wanna learn the law. Whether you are paid or whether you are a volunteer, if you are working on public work, you're a public official. Let's talk about reasonable in regards to my bill. Okay? So, water bill.
Water bill, yep.
We've had constant issues. I've talked to you before. Was it when I first got here? We talked to you about the actual issues of the water bill. So we talked about residential versus commercial. Which, residential versus commercial, how do you determine the two?
The, um, rates are based on the meter size.
Okay.
Residential is up to one inch.
Okay. And my meter size is-
Anything above that, two inches.
Okay.
At your insistence, you have a two-inch meter.
And I paid the $2,300-some-odd dollars to put a two-inch meter in. At the extra cost of the town of what?
Cost plus 20% to install.
The cost of the town with me increasing to a two-inch meter costs the town what?
We charged you 20% above what we-
That's what you charged. That would be income. The cost, the cost, I incurred. I paid for it. Me increasing to a two-inch meter does what to water coming into my, to my property?
Gives you twice as much water coming in?
And it costs-
Available.
And it costs the town what?
And you will notice from the, um, the rates that you are not paying a two-inch meter rate. You're paying half of that.
I do notice that. But here's my other issue. Over two years ago, I sent you an email asking you for public documents stating what the rates are. You've yet to respond, and you, as a public official, have to legally provide that to me. I've yet to this day actually gotten that.
Well, where's your mail going?
So now, let's get the mail. All right. This is what I have here. This is my last, this is my last invoice right here from you. All right, so what day is water due?
The 15th.
Okay, the 15th.
Of each month. If you're not here and you're not using more than 2,000 gallons a month, you owe $33.59 by the 15th of each month.
Mailed this February 6th, correct?
It goes out the first week.
February 6th. Do you see the postmark of February 6th? February 6th.
No, that's, that's when it went through Jacksonville. It went out of Otter Creek well before that.
So February 6th postmark. That gives a nine-day billing cycle. What bill do you pay in your life that has a nine-day billing cycle? What's a normal standard billing cycle?
I don't know what the normal billing cycle is.
Normal billing cycle. You pay your credit card bill. What's the normal billing cycle? What is a standard business normal billing cycle? Thirty days.
It varies.
It's 30 days. You know it, I know it. All right, here is a letter from the postmaster over at Otter Creek. What day did I receive the bill?
On March 2nd.
March 2nd.
The, the meters are read the last week of each month.
So the bill is due February 15th. It's mailed February 6th. A nine-day billing cycle. I get it March 2nd, and you're charging me late fees. For what?
Because we didn't, the late fees that you were charged, we did not receive your payment until after the 21st of the month.
I didn't receive your bill until March 2nd.
And you know that you owe $33.59 by the 50th of each month.
This is, this is this payment, okay? This is this payment, right here. This is what I'm willing to pay for my, for my actual water. So here's the town of Otter Creek trying to find more ways to actually steal from me. And frankly, it is theft. Now, I'm a giver. I think most people who know me actually know I'm a giver. And Otter Creek could be thriving because I am a giver. But instead, they wanna take and find another way to take, and another way to take. And I can't stand theft. And therefore, if you steal one thing from me, I'm gonna come at you and take everything from you.
You don't pay your bill, we'll turn off your water.
So, I've already gotten disconnection notices as well. And I appreciate you sharing that, because everything you say will and can be used against you in the court of law. And if you wanna start a mess, trust me, I'm not only going after the town, I'm going after you personally. My goal's not gonna be to win. My goal's gonna be to bankrupt you and take everything you have. Now, you keep doing illegal things, I'll come after you hot and hard.
I'm not doing illegal things.
I've warned you when I first got here. Do the right thing. Now, number two.
I don't know what you're talking about, do the right thing.
There's my payment.
Will you re-
Stop charging me late fees when you didn't even have the bills in December, by December 15th. Now, number two.
Yes, they did. They went out the very, the 1st of December.
Number two, I want my water turned on, my second location. Are you ready?
Mm-hmm.
I want the water turned on at the ARC. I just dropped a bombshell on Mary. What you don't know is Mary actually serves in a capacity with the Christian school that wanted the ARC. But they did nothing. They had nothing under contract. As a matter of fact, she tried to guilt trip the former owners as she told them she's so disappointed in them from selling it out from underneath the church as they went to have their water disconnected.
Okay.
Today.
We need a $200 deposit.
Not a problem. Can I borrow your pen? Thank you. And when you mailed that, I don't wanna see late fees and charges on there either. For the ridiculousness of a nine-day billing cycle?
It's not a nine-day billing cycle.
What is it? Is it 30 days?
The first of the month. Well, and it used to be they were due on the meeting date. So it changed. It could have been the 8th of the month. It could have been the 11th of the month.
So you think you're completely and totally reasonable mailing a bill to everybody and then having it due well before they even get the bill? You think that's reasonable?
I did not mail bills after they were due.
Your credit card managed to bill, and it's due on the 15th, but you got it March 2nd. And you'd be okay if they started charging you interest for that. You'd be like, oh, yeah, that's all right. That makes sense. That's, that's smart?
I don't know what you're saying.
No kidding? That's part of the problem, Mary. Oh, my goodness. When will the water be turned on?
Tomorrow.
I need my water turned on today. Your town hall is in session till 2:00. I need my water turned on today. Why is it gonna be till tomorrow?
Because I don't turn the water on.
Okay, then I'm gonna turn the water on. Who turns the water on? Russell or Lonnie?
Neither.
Who turns the water on?
Richard turns the water on. If I can get a hold of him, we get it turned on today.
It needs to be today. Town hall is still in session till 2:00. Water needs to be turned on, please. Oh, my goodness.
If you have a problem affording your water bills, you can appeal to council.
I am. I'm gonna appeal this Tuesday. And I think you're well aware council's gonna end up changing as well. So you ladies can keep laughing. You're a part of the problem, not the solution in this place.
Anything you say, sir.
I always had her to do with reading my due date. It's on every water bill.
It's not, anything you say gets twisted.
How can anything be said twisted when it's all reality and truth, ladies? What is one thing that I've said that's been twisted?
Absolutely everything, sir.
Okay, so I didn't, I didn't get my bill on March 2nd, right?
Your bill was mailed out at the beginning of the month.
And when did I receive it?
That's not our problem.
You received it.
We have nothing to do with that.
Well, then, why do you care about, why do you care about a late fee when you know it's getting paid all the time anyway? Will you please get on with the phone with them immediately so I can have the water turned on? Yes or no?
I will get a hold of him.
All right.
As, as soon as I can reach him. He is, he is working.
What's his number?
I'm not giving you his number.
Oh, my goodness. Not only are they stealing from me, you've also seen she's broken the law by not providing legal documents. By the way, the worker's phone number? If they communicate that way, which you just saw, she does, I will get a hold of him. He's working today. Town hall's in session till 2:00. He's gotta go turn my water on. She just refused again to give me legal information. That is against the law. She's blatantly, clearly breaking the law. Oh, my goodness, Mary. Mary, we had a good conversation when I first moved here about all this stuff you were doing, and you apologized. You said you were gonna do things right. And then you went and did the exact same things. You've yet to give me public information and public record.
I sent you those public records.
You continue, you continue to try and milk me for money when I even told you, don't try and take advantage of me and get money. I would help the town. And yet, here we are at the same position. You would not be okay with this. If this was happening with any of your bills, you would not be okay with this. You wouldn't be okay if your credit card was doing it to you. You wouldn't be okay if the electric company was doing it to you. Don't justify it. Don't sit there and justify it and be like, oh, well, I don't know when you didn't get it. Doesn't matter. Be a decent human being and do the right thing.
You could have your bills the same day that they're prepared if you wanted to take them by email.
That'd be great. How do I have a public record and trust you to actually do the right thing with it, then?
I've done the right thing.
I've been going through this. You're sending me disconnection notices. You're sending me this. You're charging me this. You don't even have it in the mail-in time. I'm checking with the post office in December. You didn't even have it at the post office by December 15th. It's due the 15th.
That is incorrect.
Okay.
That's totally incorrect, because other people had theirs paid.
Everybody I talked to didn't have it.
Paid the first week of December.
And the postal worker said, nope, hasn't been dropped off yet. And yet, you're charging me because the mail gets it to me at a certain point in time. How ridiculous is that? You would not be okay with that in your own life with your own bills. And I'm not okay with it because I'm an outsider from north and came and bought property here. And you guys go, oh, I'm gonna do this because he wants a two-inch line. How much, how much more does the gas cost to put in your vehicle if you have a 10-gallon tank or a 20-gallon tank?
I had nothing to do with the two-inch meter. You asked me why you are charged a different rate.
And I paid for it, and it cost the town nothing more for me to have a larger meter. It cost the town absolutely nothing more. You haven't sent me anything. Everything I have, I've gotten on my own. You have not responded. You have not sent anything. Let's be very clear. Let's be very clear. Then you should have a record of what you sent me. Wait for this response, okay? Wait for this response, because it becomes really, really important towards the end of the video with the three sheriff waiting for, you know, to remove me from the town hall meeting, because I request every single documentation, which is gonna come in play next week, the next week after that, the next month, months after that, maybe even potentially the next year.
I do.
Let's see it, because it's gonna become very important. I've had it.
I'm not gonna discuss this anymore right now, Jeremy.
I've absolutely had it with the incompetency and trying to actually go, oh, okay, here we go. We're gonna, it's not a little show, first of all. How about you actually be a decent person and do the right thing? Can you do that?
I haven't treated you any differently.
What do you think all these bills are? It's my fault that I got my mail March 2nd. So I'm, you're gonna charge me more?
March 2nd for a March 15th bill?
It's my fault. It's February bill, remember? You see it. It's in your hands. I want my water on today at my second location. You're in session. You just denied to give me the person's name to actually turn my water on.
No, I didn't.
Not like you're, it's not like this is huge metropolis here. I mean, this is easy stuff. Treat people with kindness. You know what? If you would have been kind, did the right thing? We've never been in this situation. Just do the right thing. Do the right thing. It's that easy. Do the right thing. Please, for your sake, for the town's sake, for my sake. Just do the right thing. You would not be okay if I was doing this to you. You would not be okay if any of your other creditors were doing this to you. You would not be okay with it. I'm not okay with it. Please have my water turned on. Thankfully, I think Mary got the message, because my water was actually turned on before I got back to the schoolhouse. Now, remember last month when I went to the town hall meeting Now, remember last month when I went to the town hall meeting and the mayor threatened to have me removed and I said, if you're going to, you better bring the police? Well, this time he did and I'm about to talk to council about all of this thievery and all of these legal issues. Back up, who's reading it? Because legally, you're all supposed to be supplied a P and L for every meeting. And you're gonna bring the police to remove me, Russell. You're gonna bring the police to remove me, so if you do it, bring it. Legally, you're to provide a P and L to this council. At a minimum, four times a year, where's the P and L?
You're out of order, sir.
You wanna call participant of the town out of order, but you're the mayor, are you in order not providing a P and L? So this is what town hall meeting has come to, we have a sheriff here for the town hall. Because we already know that illegal activities are happening and they're gonna be called out on it, so it might be an interesting meeting here tonight. First of all, I'd like to share with the community, I have purchased the Lark Building and I wanna be very open and clear that the community is welcome there for. Christmas events with the children, if you guys have an opportunity or need an event center, please reach out, I have no problem, the community using that free of charge. I'm all about the community and I'm all about the people. I have no issue with the community unless that community is trying to steal from me. Which is issue number two, I believe I'm being stolen from. When I arrived here in Otter Creek, I put in a two inch meter line. I was never told that my, my expenses for water would increase as I put in that two inch meter line, never disclosed to me. As a matter of fact, the town profits on top of that, on twenty percent of my purchase, two thousand three hundred plus dollars. And then later, I'm given bills above and beyond because I'm a commercial property in a residential area. I addressed that with Mary, Mary says, oh, nope, there's, there's nothing in writing, I'll take you back down to actual residential. Which then the council then approves a commercial, a commercial rate for me. Now I wanna be very, very clear. When I buy electricity, I buy it by the watts, not by the size of my amperage in my breaker box. When I buy gallons, when I buy diesel for my trucks, I'm not charged based on my fuel tank size, I'm charged based on gallons. And currently, I'm being charged based on my meter size that I paid for, the town it has no extra expenses for. As a matter of fact, because I have a larger line, the town actually decreases expenses because it's not held back the water. It flows more freely, am I making myself clear? Number two, every time I get a bill. I have to keep going, I only have three minutes legally. Every time I get a bill. My bill comes in past the due date, if I may share this with you. So my last bill, I had a nine day billing cycle. Now, I don't know about most of you, but any standard business billing cycle is thirty days. Now, I'm gonna just openly say this and I don't mean it derogatory and I don't mean it to puff myself up, I probably pay more bills than all of you all together. In any given month and year. This is the only bill I have in my life that has a nine day billing cycle and not a thirty day billing cycle. Not only that, I have a letter here from the postmaster at Otter Creek. My last bill, which was due February fifteenth, arrived March second. And I continue to get late charges and I continue to get disconnection notices. I am tired of the town trying to steal from me when I'm trying to build into the town. Thus, number three. Via chapter one nineteen, public records via email and hand delivery. To the records custodian, this is a formal request for the public records pursuant to chapter one nineteen Florida statutes, please direct your responses to me. Number one, please provide the town of Otter Creek, Florida's town charter. When the mayor Russell told the sheriff to remove me, the sheriff did this, had his hands like this and went. Not only did the sheriff refuse to remove me, Russell then illegally closed the meeting. And council members began to literally run out. Well, as an ordinance and resolutions from the town's inception, number two, provide the minutes of all town meetings from January first, two thousand and nineteen to present. Number three, provide all recordings of town meetings from January first, two thousand and nineteen to present. Number four, please provide all emails of the town's elected officials, employees, agents from two thousand and nineteen. Please provide all text in the town's elected officials, employees concerning any public business. From January first, two thousand and nineteen through present, number six. Regarding the town's resolution, twenty twenty-one oh five, provide all studies, quotes, estimates, resolutions, draft correspondence amongst. Elected officials, employees, agents relating to the same. Number seven, provide any correspondence in the format regarding resident Jeremy V Hales from January first, two thousand and nineteen to present. I request you provide a list of all documents claimed to be exempt from inspection, examination. Identifying each such document by date, written description, sender and or drafter, number of pages, citation of specific exemption claim. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation and your prompt attention in this matter.
Other public comments is, we're gonna have a meet the county today, it's been changed from the church to Zimfagin's house, March twenty-third at six P M.
You requested a two inch meter. Your plumber called me personally to put you in a two inch commercial meter.
Maybe I should take my gavel off and start hitting something, you're out of order, you're out of order. Meeting, wait, you just closed a public meeting without getting the rest of public comments. You've been formally handed the request via Florida law, you have been emailed the request via Florida law. Yes, sir. Every single record. From January first, two thousand and nineteen to present must be legally reported to me, I have yet. Every record, every single record, I have illegally been withheld of the records. Even of this week, I was withheld the text number information of the employee for Otter Creek, which is illegal. Two inch meter. And I would like the water issue resolved, please. You also don't go back eighteen hundred feet into the woods.
If you wanna, if you wanna regular meter. Put it in writing uh, to the town, if you want your meter changed out and we'll, we'll get you a regular meter.
What I want is a non-corrupt mayor and a competent clerk of courts. Now, now we got three sheriffs, we got three. Now enters Laura Mott, previous mayor before Russell and mayor after Russell, so it was Russell, Laura, then Russell. And this is the individual who filled Becky Joe, our new neighbor's ears with all kinds of weird stuff.
They didn't give you permission to record me.
Didn't need it. Got a different vantage point than I did.
Yeah, cuz I was sitting right next to the three cops that were there and the one cop was like, like, what are we doing here? And he was like, we're here for the guy in the gray hoodie. And I was like, whoa, I was like, so they were, they were called there just for Jeremy.
So many of you all over the world are sitting there going, is this place real? Can these people be real? It's one hundred percent the reality of what happens in our life on a daily basis. And many of you are coming to see us this week in Otter Creek for our half meal time to grill. I know hundreds, if not thousands of you are gonna be touring Otter Creek. Number one, be respectful, number two, be peaceful. Don't do anything foolish. Allow me to care for these issues the appropriate and the legal right way.